The meeting is now reconvened to open session. The board would like to remind the public that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. It is also available via livestream for the public through links found on the front page of the RUSD website. We would also like to remind everyone to please enter and egg. Tonight, we have Eddie Hill from Rockland High as our student board rep. Eddie, will you please introduce the color guard and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the presentation.
Individually as the KLFs, all of their first names start with K. And since 2019, when I started here in Rockland Unified at Sierra Elementary, and they were one of the first families to warmly welcome me to the community in 2016. Most recently, though, Karen has served on our. Heaven, her husband creates awesome relationships with our students in his role as a Sierra Cross, also fondly referred to as the mini KLFs. Here's a quote from the teacher who had all four of them. "I had the honor of having all four Levine Flandrop children. It truly amazes me how each one of them is uniquely amazing."
...about all of your volunteerism efforts for years now. I know that you do so much there. And so on behalf of the board and the district, we wanted to thank you as a parent that can help make these experiences magical for our children.
Tonight, for our employee recognition, we have Springview Middle School Principal Danielle Lauer.
...of students as. Look into Kat's classroom, you can hear her students talking about what they are learning. A visitor will see Kat greeting students at the door and walking around the classroom, checking in on students' progress. She truly cares for each student and wants to see them succeed. Over the years, Kat has been asked to take on different classes, create new curriculum, move classrooms, and make several changes to her schedule. She has done this with complete grace and absolutely no complaints, and with the smile that makes you know that she truly cares. I am lucky that I got to know Kat in her final year of teaching. I've been amazed with her resiliency and ability to persevere when things are challenging. Kat exemplifies everything that a great teacher should be. The pride she shows for our profession is admirable. Kat is about to start her retirement journey. She will be missed greatly on campus, but we look forward to her visits, and she will definitely be a busy sub when she is ready. Kat is loved by all who know her, and she absolutely makes Springview a better place.
Kat, 18 years. How incredible. Every word you said, I wish I could echo and put an exclamation point by every one of them. You know, we hear the phrase flexible and adaptable, and I don't think there's anybody that has exemplified that more, especially this last year. And so I am honored on behalf of the board to recognize you, to appreciate you. Sad to see you go, but we are so thankful for your many, many years of service. So Kat, on behalf of the board, thank you. We have a certificate to acknowledge your 18 years in being our employee of the month. And... We have an incredible assortment of treats for you. I hope there's at least 18, because you would deserve at least 18 treats in the basket. Thank you, Kat, for serving our community so well.
Thank you so much, Kat. All right, Chief Dosange, will you introduce our recognition for the Air Force Junior ROTC School Board Color Guard and Junior ROTC for the 2022-23 school year?
President Hough, trustees, and Superintendent Stock. With tonight's board meeting being the last one while schools are in session, we would like to recognize the Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps School Board Color Guard for their contribution, dedication, and commitment to present the colors during board meetings throughout the 22-23 school year.
We are so grateful for the wonderful job you guys do. Every single meeting being so respectful. You guys really bring such a unique feeling into our meeting. We really appreciate it. So I want to take just a minute to recognize each of you, and you get something yummy from munchies, which is so fun. So I'll call you guys up one at a time. Cadet Master Sergeant Ryan Manning. There you go. Thank you so much. And here, this is for you. All right. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Heaven Green. Thank you so much. That'd be great. Thanks. Cadet Captain Clayton Hove. Thank you. Appreciate it. Cadet Captain Bailey Newman. Thank you, Bailey. Cadet Master Sergeant Maximus, is it Kotay? Thank you. Appreciate it. Cadet Master Sergeant Sophie Burkhalter. Thank you. And Cadet First Lieutenant Kevin Laguna Gonzalez. Thank you. And is Sergeant Pearl still here? Oh, let's just have a round of applause for Sergeant Pearl and all that she does.
Well, trustee Counter and I have the honor and pleasure of recognizing our student board reps. We are on the committee with our student board reps, so we get to know them and we get to see all that they do and are amazed and impressed every time with how mature and respectful they are and what great leaders they are on their campuses and in our community and even here in the boardroom. So we have some things written by their leaders that we're going to read out for them. So I am going to read for Bahar, and this was written by her activities director, Mr. Armus. It says, "Bahar made the statement that she wanted to leave her mark on Whitney High School very early in her student government experience. She has been an outstanding leader on the Whitney High School campus during her four years. She is a three-year student government participant and wears many hats on campus. She plays basketball, plays a big role in our nationally-known WCTV-19 broadcast program, and not to mention Associated Student Body President. She is hardworking, holds her teammates accountable, loves to laugh and joke around, and she understands leadership. Over the last few years, Bahar has elevated the work ethic of her classmates and also set the bar high for those to come in the future. She was the X-Factor Commissioner as a junior and this year as president. Bahar has challenged her peers on the executive board to think outside of the box in order to maintain a positive school culture on campus. She has been an active student trustee and always seeks feedback from the student body to ensure their voices heard. A tremendous accomplishment for her was implementing Whitney High School's first student senate group. The meetings aim to gather feedback from the student body to make good decisions in future events and activities. Bahar is off to study at the University of Harvard to get a first-class education. She has a goal to study law, and we cannot wait to see her thrive in the profession. The leadership family wishes Bahar the best in her future endeavors, and we are very thankful for the work she has done to positively influence those around her." And that is from Mr. Armus, but we can testify to all of those things as well. Bahar is amazing. Bahar, will you come up?
So I can't, I'm going to ruin Thompson's voice, so I'm going to try to do it in my best version, okay? So Eddie has been everything that I could have hoped for in an ASP president, and we've been coming out, as we have been coming out of COVID haze. I tried to reestablish the culture that we lost. Eddie has been instrumental in helping us come to the realization that we are not trying to reestablish what we have lost, but rather are tasked with creating a completely new culture. That has been a daunting task that Eddie has embraced for all the right reasons. He's been very active involved in campus during his four years at Rockland High School, giving up four years of electives to be involved in student government as the epitome of altruism. As a class representative and class president, he exemplifies and models school spirit for his entire class. This year as ASP president, his focus expanded more school-wide. His involvement with multiple school, or students, sorry, student-focused groups in addition to student government.
All right, we do have three more seats to fill, but we're going to go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda. We do not have Chuck here for CSEA, so we're going to move to Rockland Teachers Professional Association. Welcome RTPA President Travis Moget. Travis?
I don't know about you guys, but it's that fun, everybody telling you we're having tech issues that aren't here right now, like you don't know. So I always liken it, like when, to Ryan's credit, when he sends out the communication of like emails down, but it comes through email. So you get it after the email's up and running again, so. But thank you, Ryan. We know your team's working on it. We love you. No pressure. No, trying to lighten the mood. First off, I really got to keep petitioning, like, you guys got to make me stop going after all this awesome recognition. I'm sitting here watching, especially the comments around the student reps. And for those of you that don't know, I was a student rep my senior year at Rockland High School, and like, I was completely lost and a chicken without its head compared to what these guys are doing now. The last few years especially of our reps has just been an amazing transformation of their involvement, their voicing of things. And again, I know we recognized them already, but I just, I can't not say it. It's just amazing. I'm listening to things you guys are saying about them and knowing some of them individually and just like, I feel a little bit small right now, because these people are amazing at their young ages and the things that they're going to go do. So just congratulations to our student reps and all the people that have supported them, their families that have gotten them here, and you guys for helping empower them to do the things that they're doing. Again, it's been a big transition with that role the last few years, which has been awesome. Also, Mrs. Bose, I mean seriously. As my daughter worked with her as a TA in one of her support classes as a seventh grader at Springview, and there wasn't a day that she didn't come home, which is something to share about Mrs. Bose. And it was, not that it wasn't ever academic, but it was always just like, that magic that some teachers have at a level that other teachers strive to was every day. And it was awesome to hear all that recognition as she's riding off into that wonderful land of retirement. So, and as a Springview dad, like shameless plug, because best middle school in town, so. Also want to give some extra recognition before I go into my, the rest of my RTPA comments. Superintendent Stock, we got an opportunity to attend a staff meeting at Sunset Ranch Elementary today. And if you know anything about all the labor work we've done in Rockland Unified over the last few years, the fact that we are at a staff meeting jointly presenting, and the staff wanted to hear, like, how did we get to where we are, right? They wanted to kind of hear the like, what's the baggage that led to the journey that we're now on? And just a huge shout out to Superintendent Stock, Lori Kircher, the principal over there at Sunset Ranch, her site rep Kate Kirk, for reaching out to us and inviting us. And it was just an awesome opportunity to come and kind of put our money where our mouth is, right? We talk about it from a 30,000-foot view. We hear updates as we're here with you guys on Wednesday nights. But to just sit with staff and for them to feel comfortable with everybody in the room to ask some hard questions. I mean, we had questions, or we had a story shared that was, when I got hired in Rockland 20 years ago, we were on the same page, and we were in the trench fighting together, and then something led us to fight in opposite trenches. And now we're on that journey back into the same trench, doing things collaboratively. And to hear that story is just a nice reminder of like where we've been, where we want to go, and where we are, and just kind of that reminder of like, there's still work to do, but man, have we come a long way. And it's just an awesome, awesome thing. It's that tangible thing we keep talking about at a site level, and that's as pure as it gets. In addition to that, it was, it was fun to watch, and Superintendent Stock maybe, maybe wasn't as fun for him, but we had a staff member raise their hand and ask, so how is all this collaboration going to work now that we've seen and are starting to learn what the May revise and the budget and the stuff that kind of limits potential things that we're interested in in the district? And without hesitation, Superintendent Stock and I were both able to give consistent answers, and just the willingness to answer, that's a tough question. Nobody in a superintendent seat wants that question while they're on the spot. And there was no scripting, there was no pre-gaming when it came to getting ready for that staff meeting. So I want to first applaud the staff member for being willing, and I think that speaks to all the work everybody's done, is that staff members, they're not concerned with titles, they're concerned with how do we get better, right? Their focus is very different than it used to be. And then again, Superintendent Stock, a huge shout out to you for attending that meeting and being willing to give an honest answer to that question, right? At the end of the day, it's, it's not going to be the answer everybody wants to hear, but if it's an honor answer with a little bit of understanding behind it, I think it's the answer that we're all willing to accept or work with. So it was just really fun to have that opportunity. And again, huge thank you to Sunset Ranch. We're hoping there's more that do that, but it was just kind of a fun kickoff and to lead off into, you know, kind of that last part of the school year. Additionally, so bargaining updates. It was a, I don't know what the right word is, but it was, it was an interesting experience. It was a good experience, so all positive. But at our last bargaining session, we started talking and looking more deeply into the financial realities of where are priorities, where are needs and wants, right? All those kinds of things. And we made a commitment this month of the year because we know there's a May revise, and we know we're close to a final budget. But knowing that we're all living in the land of speculation and of promises sometimes that are fulfilled or not fulfilled. But the point of this was that conversation kept re-centering itself on LCAP priorities. We have never talked budget, and then in the same conversation talked, how does this work with our LCAP priorities, right? Where does it align? Where doesn't it align? Is it okay if it's in or out of that goal one, two, or three, or whatever? It was just a really, really cool experience. I haven't even shared this with my team, because it was one of those, you know, late night moments where it just kind of clicks. But it reminds me of, Tony and I shared with you guys a few weeks ago, when we were sitting in a bargaining conversation, we had subcommittees doing work all over the place, and we kind of just were like, wow, look at where we are, right? And again, like, we're talking LCAP stuff. If there is a driving force of all resources and things, decisions in the district, it's the LCAP. And to have that at the level where our community is giving input, our staff is giving input, and our bargaining teams are considering that input and looking at all the things that impact that, it's just, it's on a level that, I don't know, unless you have been involved in, in contract negotiations or kind of that legalese side of the world, I don't know that you can really grasp the like value in that conversation. And again, the step that has taken us to get there and the work that's taken. As we all know, May revise hit, there's all kinds of fun and curiosities around that. And we're actually looking forward to, so tomorrow, we're going to spend the day in bargaining for the fourth or fifth year in a row now, and maybe even longer than that. We're going to be joining the district on Friday to hear the official update from school services. So it's just great to continue that conversation of, we're all getting the same information from the same place, we're looking at it from our various lenses. And then at the end of the day, where are there going to be compromises and that fair share kind of agreement that we keep talking about with our formula and our approach to things? Because as we all know, education's always overtaxed and underfunded when it comes down to it. So certain things come in higher, certain things come in lower. And again, leaning back into those LCAP priorities and then other initiative and needs around the district, it's, it's a fun process compared to what it used to be. I'm hoping at our next update, it will be us presenting, and hopefully beforehand, we'll all be informed, but it'll be us presenting that agreement that we've all been working towards. Just like last year, it was that rush into the end of May, beginning of June, but feel really confident that we'll have that, just that commitment we've made to you guys as board members, to our members and our community around us, to have that settlement and look at what that's going to do as we ride into. I know we like to count the days till summer. Some of us like to count the days until the beginning of next school year. And by some of us, I mean, I think it was Bill that keeps reminding us of that one. But again, but, but the weight lifted when we have big things like contract agreements or at least direction, even if we don't have a full formal agreement yet, is a huge lift off of the workload of staff when we go into August. So we can actually prepare for the things that we're here to prepare for, and that's welcoming students back in our classroom. So obviously, tonight, we have a full boardroom. And I just want to, I want to mention and just give some words of appreciation, because the whole concept of board meetings, as you guys, as elected members know, is for you to be an entity of communication and input from our community. And the fact that we have a full room behind us that are here to talk about whatever various topics they have to share with us is, is a huge testament to, we do have a community that wants to be involved. We do have a community that cares to be involved. We do have a community that represents every opinion inside of the spectrum of decision-making, of all the things in our community. And just, just want to remind us as leaders, and I think our best example of this is our school board representatives each week or each meeting, is that there's a thousand sides to every conversation, there's a thousand opinions to every, every decision. But at the end of the day, allowing everybody to have their opportunity to come up here or in whatever means they need to speak is huge. And just want to remind people kind of where we've been in the past, and I'll speak to this from kind of an RTPA perspective. So three years ago, we were in a opposite trenches of each other, throwing grenades into the middle, right? And at the end of the day, like, we never landed either side where we wanted to. And all we did was just build this frustration and this resentment, and the only thing that ever got us through it was compromise, right? We all had to compromise in the end. Then we move into this collaborative or this open mindset kind of approach that we're in now, where whether we're throwing grenades, or we're throwing water balloons, or we're just kind of high-fiving each other, there's still compromise, there's still decisions that are being made, but everybody's voice has been heard. Everybody's been respected, everybody's been trusted in the process. And there's a lot of things swirling around our community right now that are dividing our community. And I just want to remind everybody to look at, if nothing else, look at the example that our students set. Look at the example that the adults have set with the board's commitment and support, with Superintendent Stock's commitment and support, RTPA's commitment and support, where we can go from division and we can get ourselves back to that homeostasis of collaboration, even if it means collaboration looks like agree to disagree. And I just really appreciate the professionalism that people come up here and speak with. I appreciate the challenging job that you board members have during public comment of making sure that things stay on topic and things stay, not personal, but professional, and, and, you know, address the issue, not the person, right? Or bargaining, we like to say, let's bargain the problem, not the person. And it helps a lot, right? It helps Tony and I get through conflict or frustrations that it's not a Tony thing, it's not a Travis thing, just like this. It's not a Rockland thing, it's not a Whitney thing, if I'm thinking in school competitions, right? Because at the end of the day, we're all Rockland, right? Their shirts say it, but at the end of the day, we're all Rockland. So I just want to remind people of that and, you know, wish you guys the best tonight. And Julie, you get to practice those teacher skills with the fun of the room. And again, encourage everybody, be heard, because that's what we're here to do. And that's what we, the best is when students come up here. And you guys know that, as a teacher, it just warms my heart to watch students come up here and exercise their voice. And it's been a great opportunity hearing and talking from students over the last couple of weeks on, how do I get involved? How do I do stuff? And if anything's going to come out of this, that's the, that's the silver lining that we can take through this, this need and want for our community to come up here and be heard. So again, that's not as RTPA topic, but I just, I couldn't not say something. So I appreciate your guys' time. This may be my last in-person meeting. You guys scheduled one after school gets out, so. But we'll be here, hopefully, like I said, we'll have somebody here presenting a full contract agreement with you guys. If not, maybe we'll let Tony do it. We're close enough now, I think he can handle that, so. Thank you, Mr. Lamoges. But if I don't see you guys again, it's been a great year. Thank you, guys, for trusting and Roger and I to take our collaborative work where we did and for helping us push that forward into next year, wherever it goes. But it's only going to go up, I promise you that, so thank you.
Trustees, I'm pleased to announce that we have streaming back. We actually did during the last item, and I verified it myself, watching online. So if you were trying to connect, reconnect, and their streaming is back up.
Awesome. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing really quick to Travis? I wasn't here last meeting, and so I didn't have a chance to speak to our labor management work that had happened during April, and I just, I wish I had more synonyms for the word collaboration. And I think what really has made all the difference for me and what I've seen personally is relationships have changed. And so we went two years ago, Julie and I are on the labor management team, from it being a little like this, right, arms folded, leaning back, to having crepes in my backyard last year, to a meeting where people are leaning forward and laughing and talking, and relationships have really changed and attitudes, and it's really refreshing. And I appreciate your words about hope, because we have a lot to work, work towards, a lot to look forward to, and we have a lot in common, so thank you.
Okay. We are now going to move to comments from our student board representatives. And tonight, it's going to be a little bit different, and I will turn it over to Eddie Hill to take it from there.
For my student report tonight, I'd like to call up Bahar Maradi to the podium so we can make a joint statement. In light of recent circumstances, we feel that as student representatives, we must speak on behalf of the student body. We are grateful to have a platform where we can advocate for those who feel that their voices are not heard, and we aim to do our part in creating a safe environment for people to speak. We all have one common goal, which is to promote the well-being and safety for all students in the school district.
I want to speak as a young woman and as a student in the district. Harassment and bullying is something that happens far more often than we think it does, and as saddening as it is, we are incredibly grateful that we are bringing awareness to it. We want all students to feel empowered to speak out and to feel safe on our campuses.
This is an opportunity for there to be peace without silence and a positive change in the culture of our community.
If any students need anything at all, please reach out to us so we can support you in any way that we are able to. Thank you.
So obvious why we're so proud of them. They are amazing representatives for our student body. All right, we're gonna... We're going to do something similar in that normally each board member gives some comments on some things that we've done throughout the district since the last board meeting. But for tonight, for our comments, the five of us would like to make one united statement. Though there are many amazing things going on throughout our district, we understand that there's only one thing that's on the minds and hearts of most of our families and community, and we wish to address this. At the last board meeting, a group of students and parents shared concerns of bullying and harassment that took place on and off campus, specifically the sharing of inappropriate photos and videos between students and the perceived lack of disciplinary action taken. Every one of us up in and families of Rockland, we truly and wholeheartedly believe that's ability to ensure that this is the case for every student in our care. That applies. Every student has a safe learning environment. We take any and all forms of bullying. There are programs in place for bullying prevention at every level, and in light of new information shared. For our board comments this evening, the five of us would like to make one united statement. Though there are many amazing things going on throughout our district, we understand that there is one thing that is on the minds and hearts of most of our students, families, and community, and we wish to address this. At the last board meeting, a group of students and parents shared concerns At the last board meeting, a group of students and parents shared concerns of bullying and harassment that took place on and off our campus, specifically the sharing of inappropriate photos and videos between students, and the perceived lack of disciplinary action taken. Every one of us up here ran for school board because we love this community. We love the children and families of Rockland. We truly and wholeheartedly believe that RUSD offers the best in education. We believe the statement that is above our heads, excellence in education. And we have a responsibility to ensure that this is the case for every student in our care. That applies to all aspects of our students' experience in education, including in the classroom, in the walkways, in the cafeteria, and on and off of any of our fields. We expect excellence from every member of the district, from the trustees, to the district's staff, to the teachers, and from our students. Next to our own families, the students of this district are our top priority. Their safety and their education are our constant focus. As a board, we expect that concerns like those shared at the last meeting be addressed quickly, lawfully, and compassionately, with respect to all parties. Without hesitation, upon receiving the information, the board requested a full review and report of the events that had been shared. We learned that at the time of the incident, law enforcement was immediately notified by district staff. Though we would all like full resolution immediately, it is important that law enforcement take the time needed to fully investigate. We trust law enforcement to do their job. They and the district will not put one group or any individual in this district above any other. Everyone will be responsible for their actions and any consequences that may follow. The district is limited in action that can be taken while cases are under investigation. However, the district is responsible to ensure every student has a safe learning environment. We take any and all forms of bullying, intimidation, and harassment very seriously. We have layered programs in place for bullying prevention at every level. And in light of new information shared at the recent board meeting, have requested a review of our anti-bullying policies and the consequences the district can legally enforce. As the school board, our role is to set policy, oversee, and approve programs, as well as funding and staffing for this purpose. We are committed to partnering with our students and staff to understand what more is needed, and to address any feelings of insecurity on all of our campuses. Criminal activity is handled by law enforcement. We, as a district, will not tolerate nor support the sharing of any inappropriate materials on our campuses. We are working with legal counsel to update our policies to be as strong as legally allowed. Additionally, the board has directed the superintendent to review all current board policies and administrative regulations related to cyberbullying, bullying, sexting, social media, and student codes of conduct. We are doing a deep dive into the education and training we provide at RUSD in relation to these topics. We will continue to partner with our local law enforcement, our district attorney, and the FBI, to ensure that we provide quality, age-appropriate training to our students, parents, and staff. We also understand that this issue has brought up strong feelings on our campuses and in our community. A recent communication was sent to all RUSD families and staff with resources for students, parents, and staff through Carisolus and Wellness Together. In addition, we have counselors available for our students at every site. Please contact your school office to ask for assistance. We believe in Rockland, in our families, in our students, in our staff, in our administrators, and we are committed to ensuring every student is safe and protected. This statement was prepared by all five board members, namely Julie Hupp, Tiffany Sadoff, Rochelle Price, Derek Counter, and Michelle Sutherland. Thank you. So Trustee Sutherland, would you like to... Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve the 2023-24 initial contract proposal from California School ...
Four different times, November 3rd, December 8th, January 31st, and March 7th. Offer more options at elementary, including band, strings, and choral music. We wanted to provide K3 students more music in general education, PE, VAPA program, and professional development for general ed teachers, VAPA teachers, and PE teachers. So using Prop 28 funding, we are moving forward with the following proposals. Adding four elementary music teachers, bringing our total to six. Adding a special education VAPA teacher to provide arts and music instruction for students with special needs. Adding one art teacher to each middle school and a half-art teacher to Victory High School. Providing more music stipends for our high schools. Providing many, many needed music supplies, instruments, to all levels. Providing professional development for teachers, general ed teachers, special education, VAPA and PE. And then a VAPA TOSA to oversee and coordinate programs across the district, a halftime TOSA. To date, we've been hiring madly for these open positions, because as I may have mentioned before, this is across the state. So if you've been in the committees with me, you know I was very worried about actually recruiting these people. I'm happy to report today that we've hired all the elementary positions in music, and we have a great group of individuals with lots of individual talents that I think will make a fantastic team. Other positions are open or under development and are being filled, or will be filled shortly. We've developed an elementary music schedule, which was quite a job, but we're getting there. We're assessing current materials and supplies, including instruments, so that we can order for next year, and then gathering staff input on that professional development piece and what they want, so they can be able to implement in K3. Next steps are completing the staffing work, convening the elementary music team, our new team, I'm going to convene them next week, to talk about scheduling and get their input on what we need to purchase, identify facilities, schedule collaboration dates, so we can have that district-wide articulation and vision. We'll be implementing this program in August of 2023, next school year. And then, of course, we're going to continue to dream big about ways to better this program. We can change this from year to year. We'd love to have more concerts, more before-and-after-school programs, community partnerships, so there's a lot we can do and a lot of excitement about it for obvious reasons. Finally, coming back to a special recognition, for more than 20 years, two music teachers carried forward elementary music, inspiring literally thousands of students. Amy Adams retired last year, in 2022. She served RUSD for 23 years. This year, Robin Ritchie is retiring. She's served us for 20 years. And so between the two of them, they have literally taught elementary music for most of our existence. I just want to tell them, your musical legacy, including your impact on students and programs, will long resonate in Rockland Unified School District, and we greatly and deeply appreciate your service. So thank you, Robin and Amy. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any board comments or questions?
I just have a comment. You know, this presentation took him a few minutes, but really, this is months and months and months of work from a team, but I especially want to give you a shout-out. You did an amazing job leading this group. It was fantastic that the funding happened to match when we were already wanting to put more into this program already, and I'm just so excited. As we dream big, it will be really exciting to see what comes of it. So I personally want to thank you for all the work you did.
Appreciate it.
All right, Dr. McDonald, please continue with item 10.2, a presentation on schools...
Actually, if I could, President Hupp, I'm sorry to interrupt, is, I think that it's also important to acknowledge, and it's very kind of you, Trustee Price, to acknowledge Dr. McDonald's leadership, but, Trustee Price, I think you did not mention your involvement on the committee, and actually, that you actually brought forward an idea around improving music education in our district, and began reaching out to teachers and others last spring. And so really want to thank you for your leadership and involvement in really helping us be really well-positioned, that when the voters passed Prop 28, that we had begun the work and the thinking to be ready to implement quicker than most districts. The fact that we've hired elementary music teachers already while everybody else is trying to figure out what to do, and our kids will benefit next year, really speaks to, obviously, your leadership and involvement in that, and we appreciate that, and appreciate acknowledging Dr. McDonald's leadership as well.
Are we moving on to Hannah Anderson?
Good evening, President Hupp, trustees, Superintendent Stock. I am joined tonight by Principal Brian R. Curry to share with you about our next program of choice in Rockland Unified, looking at an arts-infused school at Antelope Creek Elementary. During our presentation tonight, we'll share how this is aligned to the board's goal, define the arts program and what we have in mind at Antelope Creek, provide you an update on the process to date, as well as the engagement of our educational partners, and review our next steps. We are passionate about the idea of implementing choice for our families in the district, and this is in alignment with the board's goal. This arts-infused program, excuse me, this arts-infused program, thank you, will do just that for our elementary school students. Why the arts? Well, we just came off a presentation from Dr. McDonald, hearing about arts education throughout the state of California, but we also have multiple local data sources that show us that, at the district level and at the site level, for several years, we have had our educational partners indicate that there's a preference for enrichment programs, and specifically, whole-child approaches to education. We have seen this in our LCAP surveys, as well as our engagement over the years. The arts programs are proven to support increased critical thinking skills, opportunities for student engagement, collaboration skills, and improved school connectedness, which is a major area of focus for us, as we are in our review process of the LCAP as well. We also, it is good timing with state funding. Proposition 28 allows for specialized funding for schools to support increased visual and performing arts in our schools. At this time, I'm going to invite Principal R. Curry up to share with you a little bit about this arts-infused program in Antelope Creek.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Good evening, President Hupp, trustees, Superintendent Stock. Really excited to be here. I'm going to try to contain my excitement with my loud radio voice, so let me know. But, yes, we are looking at a vision for Antelope Creek, where we are integrating art programs throughout the school day, before school, and eventually after school, so really this whole continuum. And we would like to see the integration of visual and performing arts that is wrapped around a framework. The cool part is that we're wanting to do it with the existing state standards and our current curriculum. So in other words, we can envelop it all with what we've got, so that's great. There's going to be a rotation of grade levels, too, for specialized programs, as we envision it. So during the school day, they would be exposed to additional arts, such as theater, music, visual and graphic arts. Also, as you'll hear about later, there's interest in STEAM, you know, maybe going that direction as we develop the program. We want to, we eventually want to see a portfolio, maybe by trimester, or maybe year-end, or maybe all of the above, as students build these portfolios and maybe have a culminating project. That's also part of the vision. So why Antelope Creek? Well, because it's the best. No. I'm just kidding. Well, I'm not kidding, but I, yeah. But, no, why Antelope Creek? Well, again, we want to increase attendance, we want to increase enrollment, we're a district Title I school, and we feel like this could have that effect. Also, inclusion of additional instructional strategies at Antelope Creek, we think is a benefit of this. And again, we're talking about partnering alongside our content standards as they sit for all students. Also, we feel like there's going to be additional benefit for our English language learners, our socio-economically disadvantaged students, and our GATE students, who also get to take advantage of this additional creative programming. So lots of benefit. Here's a little bit of a process timeline for you. We started this back in the fall, and we formed a committee at the school site and began talking about the possibility of developing this. As we got to December, we expanded that committee to additional members. And then, in January, we were lucky enough to go up to Napa. I had to twist arms to get people to go up to Napa with me. But we had to visit, we visited Willow Elementary School, which is 10 years actually forward from us in the development of this art program. So it was very cool to visit there and see how they developed these programs. And then, in May, we took input from families. So where we are currently, we got the, well, sorry, I skipped a step. Then we talked to staff, we also got an interest survey from them. All staff said, let's go, let's move forward. Yeah, so we had that. And then, we took input from families, and here we are. We would like to launch an exploratory year in August. Engaged our educational partners, I talked about that a little bit already, we put out surveys, we've got them on committees, we've talked to the PTC, we've talked to the site council. We also have brought in our site reps and are having conversations with them, I'm talking with them monthly. And then we've also, again, as I outlined, surveyed families and got their feedback. Here's some of the, just a brief summary of some of the input we received so far from both staff and families. Seventy percent of them indicated that arts infusion would have a significant impact on their students' engagement in our school. Ninety-seven percent said significant or moderate engagement. Zero percent said, yeah, I don't think this is going to do anything for you. So that was good, that was good. And then, additional feedback included that they were interested in the arts, in terms of specifically what was coming. They were very excited about, hey, tell me, what programs are coming? They wanted to be involved. They were definitely worried about our teachers as well, that our teachers would receive the proper support for the programming. And they're kind of coming out of the woodwork, ready to serve, and be on committees and give input. So that's some of the early feedback we've gotten. And then finally, my last part of this, before I turn it over to Ms. Anderson again, is, so I talked about the exploratory year, that would be this coming school year. So we want to start developing scope and sequences on what they will receive, including a progression of skills that they would go through. We want to provide, start providing training to teachers in arts integration, GLAD, which is guided language acquisition and design, which, by the way, we saw in evidence at Willow, we were there, so beautiful there. And then align all that with our existing VAPA programming. And then also be developing these thematic units attached to our curriculum. And then finally, I think we're going to maybe try to visit another school. Yeah. I think that's my part. Back to Ms. Anderson.
Okay. We have, as you just heard about, we are expanding upon our existing arts and music programs in the district, and we are very proud to be able to expand upon those. We want to make sure that this arts-infused program at the elementary schools does feed in and expand upon existing programs. So we would ensure that there's alignment between the thematic units that would be built out in the program at Antelope Creek, that they would also be built upon in the VAPA classrooms, the PE classrooms, and the music classrooms. So that would look like, if I'm doing something with my classroom teacher in a third-grade classroom where I am exploring within a thematic unit, when I go off to VAPA during my VAPA time or in my PE time, that I would also have enrichment opportunities aligned to that same thematic unit. There will also be additional exploratory opportunities for students in arts and music programs. Those should take place during the school day, as well as after-school programs. We will be able to capitalize on our expanded learning opportunity program funds, and be able to provide additional options for students at Antelope Creek. This will also build pathways for students to engage in the arts in our middle school and high school settings. So we're very excited to build, from the ground floor up, opportunities for students to grow their interests and be able to expand upon those in our middle and high school settings. So next steps, as we grow our arts-infused program, will be to continue the school site committee with the inclusion next year of parents onto the arts committee. We will have pilot teachers engaging in professional learning. We are going to go on a... We are going to go on additional arts visits to local schools in the Northern California area. We'll also utilize continuous improvement so that we can, as we have in other areas, trial things at small scale in one classroom or across a grade level before we expand them out to the entire school setting to see what fits at Antelope Creek and what works for the students and the staff and the families there before we grow it larger. We'll also be engaging our VAPA and music teachers. These are professionals with a lot of experience in the arts, and we want to make sure to capitalize on their knowledge and help, and ask them to help us along this journey. We will also be further identifying the costs associated with the program and needed resources and plan for a full program implementation in August of 2024. So the exploratory year will be next school year with full implementation planned for August 2024. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions for us? Or we're here to answer questions.
Principal R. Curry and Hannah, thank you both for the presentation. Now, Principal R. Curry, I have known you at Antelope Creek for many, many years. Would you share with us, how many years have you been there?
This is 11, I think.
11 years? Then it is with good reason that you say. I would expect a principal of 11 years to say that their campus is the best. I have to say, I was so excited when I saw this first mentioned to us. And when I asked where and under whose leadership, and I was told Principal R. Curry, I smiled because you have done such a phenomenal job with the students and the families in your community. My students, my children never even went through Antelope Creek, and yet I have continued to hear incredible praises about the great work you do. So I'm excited for you. I'm excited for Antelope Creek. I'm excited for our community. I think this was a long time coming, and we as a board kind of joked, but were dead serious about wanting more programs of choice. And then Superintendent Stock said, okay, so I'm clear. How much time do I have? And we were like, three to five years, maybe three, maybe? And that was, that was a very lofty goal, I think, we threw out, knowing if it takes five, we'll be happy, but man, if we could hit three. So to hear you're already in an exploratory year next year, when we just launched another program of choice this year, I have to tell you, I am, I am so incredibly thankful as a trustee. I'm proud of Rockland Unified and proud that this will be under your leadership. Thank you, Principal R. Curry.
Thank you very much.
Again, I think for both of you guys, thank you very much, right? We had a lofty goal. We wanted to do dual, dual language, got that rolling. Corey, trail. And I can say, Brian, I appreciate you stepping up. When it all came out, here was the guy that raised his hand. We'll make it happen. Antelope Creek is the place. That's, it's amazing. And I think, you know, thank you for that. And Hannah, thank you for shepherding all this stuff and making it happen and, again, making Rockland a great place and a great educational resource for our community and our schools. So again, thank you both. Thank you both.
I know how hard it is for change on campuses, and to have your teachers excited about this, that is absolutely amazing. We are so excited to see what comes.
Thank you.
Will there be a pilot teacher at every grade level this coming year?
Good question. No, but we do have a good cross-section, including we have, so we have primary teachers and we have intermediate teachers, so we're good there. We also have a special education teacher in the mix, and we have the VAPA teacher in the pilot. So again, we think we have a good, a good cross-section.
And two-thirds of the staff will be participating in the pilot, as well as all of the staff will be provided the materials that the pilot teachers are going to be engaging with in terms of professional learning. So if they want to come on board at any point, there's no closed doors.
That's great to hear. I'm, yeah, so happy that it's at Antelope Creek to help build connectedness to that school community for the students. And I know that you love music as well, so what better principal to take this on?
Yeah. Thank you.
I have to just say, too, Antelope Creek, I wasn't going to say it earlier, but I have to now. I had no idea it was going to be at Antelope Creek. It has absolutely nothing to do with the fact that I attended Antelope Creek as a child, not under your leadership, but we are thankful for your leadership, but Antelope Creek does have a very near and dear place in my heart, fourth grade. I am so appreciative, but I had no say in that decision, so I was pleasantly surprised.
Yeah, I forgot to mention earlier, too, trustees, that we are doing a book study, too, and I, and all staff members will get the book and do the book study. And that's also how we're, we're going to, you know, bring them into the fold, too.
I'll have to find out what that book is so I can read it along, too.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm confident it's going to be successful because I know how passionate you are about it, so thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both so much. All right, before we move in, move on, Superintendent Stock, I want to check in on our video feed.
Our chief technology, we know we lost the feed again. We apologize. Our chief technology officer is working to reset it. It's a problem with the connection under YouTube, which hosts the posting. We're also checking to see if our recorded, if we'll have a recorded version that we can post later under our website so that people that missed the live piece would have the opportunity to see all the comments. So he'll be checking that throughout the meeting.
Do we have any ETA?
We don't. He keeps trying to reload, and then it's the YouTube connection, and then he, we've also are working to reset the URL again. So we don't have an ETA, unfortunately.
Is there any way we can guarantee that it's recorded?
He is checking to see what the quality is and what it contains, but there is a side recording of it being done. So I've asked him to check that during, during our meeting, so we will know if we actually have that to post.
Would there be a benefit to taking a 10-minute recess to give him the opportunity to make sure he's set up?
I don't think that would hurt at all for us to take a 10-minute recess to make sure that we can, you know, see, we can have the best the community can hear and see what's done. So if we want to take a 10-minute recess, that would be, allow me to check on that.
Folks, I'm so sorry. I know that you've all been waiting so long, and you've been so patient and wonderful out there. We have many, many people at home who also want to hear what you have to say, and they have been emailing and texting and trying to get into our boardroom tonight. And I know if you were home, you would hope that we would try and get you in. So we are going to take just a 10-minute recess in hopes that they'll be able to get us back online and get our families at home back into our boardroom. All right, folks, we are now moving our platform to Facebook Live. There's a couple of things, actually, I'll let Superintendent Stock let you know how that's going to work.
So we have posted on our social media that we are going to be broadcasting through Facebook, our Facebook account on Facebook Live, the next portion of the meeting. So that will occur. We're also placing that information on our website. So if you have, you know, anyone you need to let know that we will be broadcasting through our Facebook account on Facebook Live, and then we will be working to see if we have a recorded version of the full meeting that we will be able to post later.
On YouTube?
On YouTube, but through our website.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your patience. I am told that with Facebook Live, it does have to be very quiet in the background because any noise will come over the speaker. So if we could just do our best to be quiet in the background so that those who are watching can hear the speakers. All right, we are going to move to our public comment portion of the meeting, and I just want to repeat what Travis Moget said earlier. We truly do want to hear from everyone who came to speak. There are some guidelines that we need to follow. First and foremost, we hope to set a good example for our students and our community in our district by engaging in respectful civil discourse. When, if you want to make a comment, you do have to have turned in a green comment card. And when you come up, you'll state your full name, the city you live in, and the school your children attend. All comments must be addressed to the board. So please face the board when you're speaking. The first 10 people will be allotted three minutes each, and each person after that will be given one minute per person. The board is not permitted to deliberate or take action on non-agenda items, but may refer the matter to staff members. As per Regulation 1312 Administrative Regulation, please do not use any names of our staff or employees. If you have something that you need to complain about a staff or an employee, please talk to their direct supervisor in person, and we also ask that no foul language is used. All right, so I will announce who's up first and who's on deck. So our first speaker tonight will be Marty Munn, and up next would be Holly Donna.
Thank you, Board, for giving me the moment to speak. My name's Marty Munn. I'm the father of the boy Question. I'm one of the parents this online mob is calling a horrible parent. First off, let me ask, is it okay to jump to conclusions? Is it okay to publicly shame this boy and his family without all the facts? What happened to innocent until proven guilty? I do not condone what they both did. They both made a poor decision. But let me tell you what I know to be true. The girl at the heart of this scandal has been pursuing him. My son received a text to come over to her house during Thanksgiving break because she wanted to give him oral sex. She asked my son to grab his phone during the act, take a picture of her doing it. She sent the picture out to a group chat 20 minutes after he left her house without his consent. She's smiling in the picture, looking straight into the camera, posing. I didn't see the picture, but there's many witnesses that have given statements, eliminating any notion that she did not know she was in a picture performing a sexual act to make matters worse. Only this private area, his private area is seen, not any of hers. That is the only time they were intimate. By the way, there's no video of them having sex, nor 50 other sexual videos and pictures as stated in the last meeting. The events have transpired after the girl made these outrageous accusations. Her house was TP'd. Did you know he wasn't even there? Didn't even know about it two days, two days after it happened? He was out of town at a football camp. The boys who did it and their fathers went over and cleaned it up. Next is a forking. We didn't even know about the fork until Mr. Messina called me to let me know what had happened. I said at the time I'd pay for video surveillance on the house to catch any perpetrators in the future. Furthermore, Mr. Messina and I had a conversation after the initial accusation. During the conversation, he said he knows they both are at fault for sending the pictures out. He said they would let this go away so we don't destroy our kids' futures. Rockland High Football Staff are extremely hardworking and speak about character and discipline often. Think about how they must feel after the character assassination of their program after these lies, a program they are dedicating their lives to. There's a lot of great kids on the football team, and my kid has never witnessed any of his teammates harass her. There are now 14-year-old freshman boys in the football program with zero involvement in this situation. They're now being called rapists and sexual predators from these horrible and false accusations. Did you ever stop to think it's taken administration, the police department, the DA, a long time because this is a complex case, and they want to have all the facts before making a decision? It probably would have went faster if she would have voluntarily gave her phone up like my son did, day one. My son is being harassed by students and adults. He's been called a sexual predator, pedophile, rapist. He's been bullied online by armchair quarterbacks over false accusations. All of this is completely inappropriate. He's a child. In closing, I'd just like to say I have been praying for months for both parties to get through this time without irreparable damage, also that the school and community can repair itself after this unfortunate event that was mishandled by the public and the social media mob based off of lies and slander. Rockland, please.
We have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Holly Danna, the boy's mother. I live in Loomis. My son goes to Rockland High School. Today, our family is speaking for the first time publicly. Egregious lies were spewed at the last board meeting. They blindsided our family and caused a lynch mob mentality to surface based on blatant, bold-faced lies and stated as facts by the Messina family. Because of their lies, false stories on TV, news stations, and newspapers were reported. It created a protest where children were encouraged to protest about something that was completely false against a minor. Young girls were screaming at cars that our son is a pedophile, while adults watched, encouraged, and partook. Defamation of character is against the law in California. Defamation is an act of communicating false statements about a person to injure their reputation of that person. This is illegal. My son may have a large stature, but he is a child. He is a minor. Our family was and is privy to information that is private. We kept silent to protect the girl's reputation with a lot of grace for both minors, who both were wrong. We do have an immense amount of empathy for the Messina family, this girl in particular, for how the family has handled this and their overall approach. This, however, is nothing we can control. We are here today to set the record straight to the facts that have been verified through private investigators, police, fellow students, so our son's image can be restored. So because we have been backed into a corner by the Messina family, these are the facts. This girl asked my son to come over for oral sex. My son took the picture only after this girl asked him to, which she posed for. This girl asked my son to send her the picture that day. This girl immediately distributed the picture to multiple people and groups of people. This picture is of my son's privates, not hers. There is no sex video that my son took or has. There is no video that my son sent to anyone. My son voluntarily gave his phone and passcode January to the police when first questioned before a search warrant was, was issued. The police have scrubbed his phone. You can't hide videos or deleted information in this process. At this time, we believe this girl has not voluntarily given up her phone. Not only has, was there not 50 videos of my son having sex with other girls, there were none. There were, however, there possibly is a video of this girl having sex in a truck with a boy that is not our son. We informed Mr. Messina of this back in January where he rolled his eyes. For this reason, our family has remained silent to honor what their family must be going through and to let the police do their job. Perhaps that is the video that Mr. Messina had his, the players on his football team. The two of our football staff programs is disgusting. It is embarrassing to the community, the protesting.
Holly, that's time. Thank you. Folks, as we go forward, let's please keep in mind that we can talk about what's happening and talk about our feelings and what's going on without using names. We really especially don't want to use names of any students or minors. Up next, and I'm sorry, I must be butchering your name because you're not coming up. It looks like Athelena. Looks like A-T-L-E-N-A. Last name looks like K-I-E-K-P-A-T-R-I-C-K. All right. Okay, we're going to move on. Kate Garcia, and after Kate will be Dakota Spell. Okay. No Kate Garcia? All right. So Dakota? And after Dakota will be Todd Ward.
Hi, my name is Dakota Spell, and I'm a junior at Visions and Education Online Charter. At Valley View Elementary in sixth grade, I was in the same class as the sophomore football player that was discussed at the last meeting. In light of the outstanding protest against him at Rockland High School, I finally feel ready to speak up. Him and his football friends sexually harassed me every single day in sixth grade. November of 2017, it got so bad, he texted me, and I quote, "Answer. It's eight o'clock. I know you have to be on your phone. If you don't answer, I'm going to rape you." These texts were brought to the principal, and she determined the strongest punishment she could get. and she determined the strongest punishment she could give was a week-long suspension. I was told by the principal that if I were to speak about what this boy said to me, I would be severely punished. I was 11 years old when this was said to me. This is yet again another example of the Rockland administration trying to sweep things under the rug. I'm not here to try to get justice for myself, but to prove that this behavior has been repetitive with this boy. This also proves how the RUSD school system has yet again failed to protect another female with the same male student involved. I'm disappointed and saddened to hear I'm not the only, I'm not the only, and I'm not the last girl that this boy has affected. I know that the kid I'm talking about is watching me speak and is terrified, not because he feels remorse for what he did to me and many other females, but for the fact that this is coming back to haunt him for the rest of his life. Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Todd Ward, and my family has lived in Rockland for 13 years. My son has attended Valley View, Granite Oaks, and Rockland High School, and we are very happy with the level of education, the teacher's support, as well as the coaching that he has received. For full disclosure, I am, for full disclosure, my family is friends with the boy in question, as we are with his family. My son and the boy are considered close friends. I am proud to say that my son participates in both baseball and the football programs. I'm not here this evening to defend him, or nor am I here to poke holes in the accusations made against him. I'm not here to give you my opinion on this situation, which unfortunately seems to be the thing to do these days. I truly wish that both of these children are able to get past this unfortunate event and move on peacefully with their high school careers and be successful in whatever they choose to do. My reason for speaking this evening is something that I immediately thought of while listening to five people speak two weeks ago, and my question is actually for the board members. You have been aware of this incident since January, when it first was reported. You have also known that Rockland Police Department has reviewed the case and sent it to the DA's office. The DA's office continues to have an open investigation. Open investigation. So my question to you is this. Why would you allow your school board meeting to be turned into a courtroom and allow five different people to plead their case and speak directly about this young man while a criminal investigation was going on? Why is it okay for the mother of this girl to use the term JV quarterback? How is that protecting him? It took social media, social media about 10 seconds to figure out who that was. This brings me to my next point. Because you allowed this to happen, the meeting was immediately circulated online, and you played a role in placing a target on this boy's back. Now, why you're supposed to be protecting her, you are also supposed to be protecting him. Among other things I have read online, I've seen him called a pedophile, a rapist, and a child molester. Worst off, I saw a TikTok video that had the boy's father and his put online. This is a 16-year-old boy that we are talking about, and to date, we have seen zero evidence of anything being alleged. I do not know what's going to happen with the DA, but what I do know is that he's already been tried and convicted in the court of public opinion. There was a rally to help support Rockland Girls, which I will tell you that I do support if that's the case for women or girls that are feeling bullied or harassed. I saw on the news outlets where the SACB, where there was a very peaceful part of that protest. The signs were positive reinforcement and support of girls. However, I also saw signs that were completely discouraging to me as a resident of Rockland.
Todd, that's your time. Thank you. Up next is Ray Gorman, and after Ray will be Lorenzo Hagos.
Thanks for letting me come up here. My name is Ray Gorman. How many of you know him? How many of you actually know him? Not the star athlete, not the high school kid you see on campus, not the boy in the center of a scandal, but the actual boy. The one that has sat at your dinner table, the one that has played ball with your oldest son, the one that has spent quality time with your youngest and autistic child that normally wouldn't have had that time with other people. My family and I know him. We know his family. They're good people. They put in the work to ensure their child receives all the training opportunities they can provide him. He is one of, if not the most, hard-working 60-year-old kids I have ever met. He trained seven days a week to ensure his place at a D1 school. He has a 3.6 GPA. What does that mean? Not only that he trained 70 days a week, hours on end. He is also a great student. He manages his school, sports, family, and social obligations, all while being an excellent human being. The narrative that our community is sweeping this under the rug because he is an athlete with scholarships on the line is absurd. So why is this happening? It is happening because our society has become way too comfortable with condemning someone without knowing all the facts. We have become so engulfed in the mob mentality that you have now started attacking a child. Grown adults are calling for him to die, wishing for his family members to die and be taken from him suddenly and without warning. Comments such as, "You're effing disgusting and you don't deserve to be breathing." These are real quotes. Comments like, "Let's ruin this rapist's life." On TikTok, Brave Single Mom wrote, "May I suggest that some of you email every football D1 college recruiter and warn that they could be recruiting a predator to their campus with a winking face?" And then proceeds to list every college that has given him an offer. I emphasize, this could be, because she knows that there's nothing to prove it. But people are willing to ruin this child's life. Another incident is where a grown man, as Todd mentioned, standing outside the campus saying, "Sex predators train here", wrote number eight on his chest and a giant line through it, completely identifying who he is. What type of person does that? It says more about the type of society that we have become than it does about this kid. This community, the ones who don't know the whole story, have decided that since they heard one side and only one side, that they are going to try and ruin another human being, a kid. That is completely unacceptable. I'm thankful that the school board, Rockland Police, and DA's office are not operating off of emotions and ignorance and giving this tragic situation the due diligence it needs to come to a thoughtful resolution.
Thank you. Okay, up now is Lorenzo, and after Lorenzo will be Alicia Watkins.
Is the mic on? Okay, great. Thank you for giving me the time. My name's Lorenzo Hagos, as you mentioned. Please do not misconstrue any of my statements tonight as being against any real valid concerns that have been objectively presented to the board. What I am here to say today is I'm completely appalled at the members of this community and the local press who have pushed on a one-sided narrative regarding the issue brought forth at the last board meeting involving two minors from Rockland High School. Guilt should not be presumed simply because a person is not the first to publicize an accusation or for not publicly defending themselves thereafter. I've known the minor referred to this accusation since he was in elementary school. I have both experienced and observed his good nature and character. I will convey that the slanderous statements and defaming of his name by members of this community are far, far from aligning with his true character. Quite simply, he's a good kid. It so happens to be that he's also a good athlete. But football is not what defines him, period. He's a kid with good character, and again, say kid. He is 16. He's a minor. Protecting our minors should be paramount and should stand above opinions that are not fully informed. Adults have basically, have gone out to destroy this future of this young man, and the fact that they have is just incomprehensible to me. Directly asking colleges to strip away his scholarships, branding him with scarring labels, even the strongest of us adults would have a hard time bearing on our own. To those who have been part of this effort to smear him, you should all be absolutely ashamed. Your husbands, sons, and brothers would expect better if it were them. None of us would ever want to be prejudged before all the facts have been brought to bear. Facts and truths should be the pillars of how we move forward past this. So, to members of our community and the press, I say let's do better, because I know we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Now Alicia Watkins, and on deck is Kristen Buffington.
Thank you, Board. I'm once again scrapping my speech because I want to go ahead and tell you the truth. When I worked with detectives and the DA out of Nevada, they told me that the only thing that secured a conviction against my pedophile father was that he one time admitted in a letter what he did to me, because it is hard, almost impossible, to secure convictions against sexual predators. I'm not saying definitively what did or did not happen. I just know patterns. I know how affluence and influence can intervene and have an effect on certain members of the community, decision-makers. I also know that a majority of this board is influenced by affluence and influence in this area. The placations that I have heard, the standard statements that you have made come off as phony as Matthew Oliver's accent. I don't buy that you make children's protection a priority. I know that school boards have the ability to suspend and expel students, so it's not just up to law enforcement. Also, I've had numerous people that I will not identify reach out to me from within the Rockland High School community and the football team stating that a certain coach has told players to, quote, "Shut your mouths" when they were called in to the principal to go speak. I've heard reports of a text thread that allegedly is called "The League" with 20 to 30 football players in it, where they exchanged sexual videos of girls. Okay, without their knowledge. And even if it is with their knowledge, a girl has permission to say, "Yes, you can film me," but no, you don't have permission to share it. Consent is not optional. It is mandatory at all times. The kids behind me are incredibly brave. That needs to be acknowledged, coming out against abuse, coming out against bullying, coming out against a society that is patriarchy ruled and that protects people that, like Brett Kavanaugh, who historically have been seriously questionable, trickles down, trickles everywhere. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is one side of mostly working-class, very diverse people against another side of mostly affluent people.
Address the board, please. Address the board.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm, okay, I'm addressing the board.
Address the board.
I'm addressing the board.
Okay, time's up. We won't start your time. We won't start your time until we're ready. All right, so this is Kristen, and on deck is Kevin Hamm.
My name is Kristen Buffington. My daughter goes to Rockland. We live in Rockland as well. I'm here to discuss how my daughter has been affected by one specific incident and how lack of grace, patience, and kindness can affect an actual unwilling participant. Two weeks ago, a member of my daughter's softball team spoke from this podium. Six months ago, this same teammate sent in a group chat that included my daughter, an unwelcome and sexually explicit photo of herself and a football player engaged in a sexual act. My daughter put the matter aside as a lapse in judgment on the part of her teammate. Since then, she has endured threats and verbal assaults by adult members of this teammate's family in an effort to shut my daughter up. Because of this unwelcome explicit photo, and since April 14th specifically, through emails, texts, posts, and verbal confrontations initiated by members of the teammate's family, our daughter has been berated, assaulted, and threatened for simply knowing the truth about this photo. Her love for softball and the fun that should be has lessened and become yet one more thing in her day that seems overwhelmingly stressful. Because of this unwelcome photo, on April 21st, my husband was verbally assaulted by the family's father in an out-of-control display of rage witnessed by many Rockland families after the Rockland Whitney softball game, which led to the father shouting, end quote, "If you don't shut your effing daughter up, I will." Because of this unwelcome photo, on April 25th, the irate father sent a letter to members and leaders of Oakmont and Rockland High Schools and her softball coaches in an attempt to paint my daughter as an unhinged bully for something, for simply knowing the truth about this photo. Because of this photo, and since the last board meeting on May 3rd, the harassment of our daughter has only increased in severity. On May 10th, as witnessed by other students, an adult member of this family approached my daughter as she exited her vehicle on Victory Lane, stood inches from her face, and said, "You are such a B." Because of this photo, there have been numerous other minor verbal confrontations with students affiliated with this family that have caused her to feel excluded, alone, and certainly regretful for receiving this photo. My daughter didn't want this photo sent to her. She didn't ask for it to be sent to her, and she certainly didn't approve of it when it was sent. She should be able to walk into her school without looking over her shoulder for an intimidating adult. She hesitates to go out alone, has to text me on a regular basis while she's at school, and is constantly worried that she doesn't, is constantly worried that she doesn't look at someone the wrong way or say something that might make this worse for her, her family, or her friends. My family and I really don't want to be involved in this whole situation, but I absolutely hope that all of us want all of our kids to be safe. Therefore, we ask the board, community, leaders, and students to save all judgment until all the information is before us. Please help us keep our children safe. Please help each of the children feel the weight of this, until each of the children can feel the weight of the support and kindness and save the judgment for court. Legal matters between underage students should be handled with care.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Up next is Kevin Hamm, and on deck, Jay Gonzalez.
Many other people, there's been a lot of talk about bullying, and it's a big, big concept, and it's a big discussion. But I got to tell you, what I'm disgusted about is the worst kind of bullying is what I'm hearing. And that's not kids bullying other kids, but I'm talking about grown adults bullying a 16-year-old boy when they don't have the evidence. They don't have the facts. They've heard allegations. They've heard rumors. But to take that and go out and call a 16-year-old boy a pedophile, a predator? Do we know what the word "pedophile" means? I heard these accusations, and I got to tell you, I've known the boy and I've known the family, and I've been actively a part of that life for a dozen years. And I know these are good parents, and it's a good kid. And I didn't believe the things, but I wanted to hear it. But I heard the evidence. And now that I've heard the evidence from them, I believe what was said is patently untrue. But the facts are going to come out. You all have to be able to do your job. You have to be able to investigate that, and people have jumped on it and jumped on things without the facts. And so, I got to tell you, this has been a blindside attack to the family. That I know. So people wonder, why did it take so long to hear from the other side? Well, they thought that this was over five months ago. It was investigated. And I got to say this, the idea that this phone was confiscated, it wasn't confiscated. When he's asked for it and he says, "Here it is. Here's my passcodes. Take a look at whatever you want to see," that's not confiscated. And that's the thing that should be done. I got to tell you, Solomon, who's touted as the wisest man to live, said in Proverbs 18, "The first person to make their case seems right until another comes to cross-examine him." Well, adults should have this common sense. It should be common sense to everybody. But unfortunately, that hasn't happened. Anybody remember Amber Heard? She was lauded as being brave and being a role model. And she publicly stated, "I will not be silenced." Well, maybe her publicist wrote that. Well, maybe her publicist wrote that, I don't know. But the fact is, it was true until Johnny Depp had a chance to respond. Now, that was harmful defamation, but that was Johnny Depp, that wasn't a vulnerable minor child. Sometimes, I can't imagine that the people that were screaming all these obscenities and running around and using those kinds of words had all the evidence or had all the facts. They heard an accusation. Stop with when you've got the accusation assuming that everything must be what it is. Listen, one thing that's been agreed upon, there was a consensual act between two 16-year-olds. Everybody agrees on that, both sides agree to that. And, it sounds like both sides also did something consensual and did something stupid, sent out a photo. That's dumb, that's the kind of thing 16-year-olds should never do. But you know what? Consensual is far different from the things that have been alleged. Now, I got to say, the fact that people are now wanting to run around with the ID...
Kevin, I'm sorry, that's your time. Thank you. Up next is Jay Gonzalez and after Jay is Lauren Eason.
Hi, my name is Jay Gonzalez. I'm from Rockland, California, and I am a former student at Whitney High School. I have heard other women share their experiences and I was empowered to share mine with the hope that this bad behavior ends. In 2019, at Whitney High School, I was assaulted on campus in class while at my seat. I was choked from behind with an electrical cord by a male student who was on the Whitney baseball team. When I finally got the courage to report what happened to the Whitney High School administrators, I was retaliated against, bullied, and harassed by the student who assaulted me and his friends. I was never protected by Whitney High School staff. In fact, the student who assaulted me was not only on the baseball team, but his mother works for the Rockland Unified School District. And he ended up only being benched for two to three games at most. Why was he not punished? Was it because he was on the baseball team or was it because his mom works for the district? Again, he choked me from behind with an electrical cord while I was in class on campus. I was bullied, harassed, and retaliated against, and the administrators did nothing to stop it. Everything was reported, but nobody was punished. I could not take it anymore, and though I should have not had to in the first place, I left the school so I can work on myself and get myself out of this damaging situation. Thank you.
Okay, now is Lauren Eason, and Lauren is our last three-minute speaker. After that, it will go to one minute.
My name is Lauren Eason. I currently live in Lincoln. My daughter was a member of the class of 2019 at Whitney High School. My 14-year-old daughter Isabel Santoro was bullied at Whitney High School during ninth grade. After Isabel died by suicide, I discovered through investigating on my own that Isabel was bullied. When some time had passed, members of Isabel's social circle reluctantly began to reveal details to me of verbal and physical assaults at school meant to publicly humiliate her without any provocation. There were no cameras and apparently no adult staff witnessed any of it, even though the bullying happened on campus during the school day. I later discovered on social media, a cellphone photo was taken of my child on campus during the school day and used without her knowledge for a popularity survey comparing her with another student. This was done without consent. The internet makes bullying even worse for children today. It is illegal to photograph or record anyone without their consent to disclose or publish the image publicly. I heard a verbal disclosure at the onset of this meeting today. Seven years have passed since my daughter died by bully side. There is a real epidemic of child deaths in our community that continues to be ignored and unaddressed. The inevitable outcome of bullying is suicide. Bullying can lead to death. Evidence of bullying should never be minimized or ignored. Our school-aged youth are at risk for suicide death due to impulsive behavior and poor decision-making that can result in self-harm and death. Words matter. It is time to integrate mental health into the science curriculum. The reactive approach of bringing in counselors to speak with the bereaved social circle is not working. We need a proactive approach. Rockland Unified School District and the Rockland High Schools are not doing enough to eliminate bullying on their campuses. They are not taking a proactive stance or implementing preventative action against bullying. Policies and training must be implemented to identify and address the behaviors leading to bullying, and faculty must be trained on teenage mental health. Our kids deserve better. What are the district's standards for responding to bullying? What proactive actions are currently in place to deter bullying seven years later? Is there peer mediation? Is the school counselor, administrator involved? Are parents notified? Is the campus supervisor notified? There needs to be a lot more work done to end the bully side that has been happening in this district for at least seven years. I know of four children who died by suicide within the seven years. Eighteen months after my daughter took her life, a student at Rockland High School took... Prior to that, apparently there was a girl at Rockland High School, I think it was fall of 2015, that took her life. Unless you're there, you won't know about it because they're really good at sweeping under the rug.
Thank you, Lauren. Up next is Christina Meta and after Christina, Joseph Dana.
My name's Christina Meta. I've met quite a few of you that are up here. I am from Rockland, California. I've had four kids that are either currently in Rockland or have left Rockland. My daughter came up here and just spoke how she was choked while in class at Whitney High School in 2019. In fact, the class that she was choked in, the teacher is actually sitting in this room right now. He happened to be gone that day and a sub was in the classroom. She spoke up, we spoke up, nothing happened to the student because the parent works for Rockland Unified. She's a secretary for a principal at Springview Middle School. I didn't say the name, I said where she's from. My son, who's also in special, special ed, has also been bullied by teachers at Sunset or Sunset Ranch. So I only get a minute to speak. I will be coming back to the next meeting to get my message across and I'll be...
Thank you, Christina. Up next is Joseph and after Joseph will be Tawana Armstrong.
Hello, my name is Joseph Dana. I'm the brother of the bullying question here tonight. I thought that I would be given three minutes. I'm going to have to condense this pretty, quite a bit. The Rockland School Board has been, has gotten mischaracterized, the police department has been mischaracterized. I went to Rockland High School, I have great memories of this town, this school, these teachers, these coaches. It is sad to see what this "you can't silence me" movement has caused. This girl has clearly not been silent, no one silenced her, that is for sure. This situation has turned into a harmful gossip fest and at the expense of my brother and entire community, through her and her family's lies. The police, in our opinion, have handled it swiftly and with just action. We support the police. There have been, there has been a five-month investigation which interviewed multiple students, scrubbing my brother's phone, and talking with this girl, among other things. At this point, we are unaware that this girl gave her phone up voluntarily or even at all. The DA has not charged my bro-
Thank you, Joseph. I'm sorry, I know that minute goes fast. All right, after Tawana will be Harley Larson.
Members of the DAAS, so I'm Tawana Armstrong, member, Rockland resident, daughter graduated in 2017, 2018, I think. I am here because I absolutely agree, we have got to do better. We have absolutely got to do better. And there is a disconnect, there's a disconnect going on, and I stand before you and I have worked with you guys and you know, my motto is, I don't care if they're purple, I don't care if they're polka dot, I don't care if they have stripes. We owe our kids, there was, we owe our kids to provide them with the education so that they can be as phenomenal as possible. Everybody's not getting it. And to hear the opening comments that we're going to have a look at the, what's already on the books, that's not enough because that is, that is what's gotten us here. So I'm offering to help. So I really and truly hope you reach out.
Next is Harley Larson and after Harley is Grant Depew.
Harley Larson, two kids of Breen. I'm here as an involved parent. I know this board has talked a lot about Ed Code 6002, but clearly, the board did provide for substantial teacher involvement, asking about Amplify, you just ignored what they had to say. The board also did promote the involvement of parents, you just didn't agree with the feedback that you got. Let's be clear, 100% of the teachers supported Amplify, 100% of the parents in the extended comment period supported Amplify. Parent comments at the board meetings are plus six over multiple board meetings in support of Amplify. I really don't, you know, know what else to say. You, you want parental involvement, you know, we are involved. I was one of the 21 comments, you know, Members Satoff you said, 11,000 students, 21 comments. There's 6,200 elementary students, and how many responses does it take if all of them were positive? I'm a parent in the district, I am involved, and this board is ignoring my wishes and the wishes of every-
Thank you, Harley. Up next is Grant and after Grant is Allison Wheeler.
I've been in the community 20 years, I got three daughters, I'm a parent of daughters, I am a proud father of daughters, and I'm proud to represent Rockland High School in this community. We have outstanding teachers, parents, educators in our community, and we have been one of the best-performing school districts in the greatest academic area for all 20 years. I'm proud of my daughters, I'm proud of their coaches, I'm proud of the girls' basketball coaches, who they are as people, and the whack stories that came out last week is preponderous if you know the people that are involved. Our coaches sacrificed many hours, many dedicated time members, their community members, their fathers, their parents, their everybody, to make our young men and young women better people. If I want to ask my daughters to stand up for injustice, if I want to ask my daughters to be brave when your friends are getting bullied, then I got to stand up here right now and tell you, there's two sides to every story, and our athletes don't deserve to be targeted this way. No minor deserves to be targeted this-
Okay, up next is Allison Wheeler and after Allison will be Sydney Sartain. Okay, Sydney, come on up.
I'm a senior at Rockland High School and I've been a student in this school's district since third grade. I'm speaking today in regards to how the system's in place that are supposed to deal with sexual harassment and assault has failed victims like myself. I've been a consistent victim of sexual harassment and violations since middle school, since I was 12. And I've done everything I was supposed to and was told that I was supposed to. I went to admin, I reported the issue, and I've had issues of sexual harassment, even as recently as my senior ball, I did the same thing. I went to admin and I reported the issue. The most I've ever been told about these issues is that there simply is not enough evidence to take disciplinary action. The system is broken, the system's supposed to protect me. It has not protected me. It's failed me and so many other people, and something needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sydney, and thanks to all who stayed this long and listened to all the comments and were respectful. That is the end of our public comment section and we will now move on to item 12, which is pending agenda items. Trustees, do you have any items to be placed on the pending agenda?
I would like to motion, okay, to put an item on the agenda, it can be just discussion. It was something brought up by Travis Moget two meetings ago, and I think in having a large volume of comments here, it would be good to have a discussion about our public comment procedures, as far as the timing of it, the amount of time given to each speaker, just to make sure that we are doing everything we can to hear people out.
Is there a second?
Well, we have, we may not have a formal policy, but maybe we need one, and just to make sure that we are doing everything we can and that the way we have it now is how we want to continue, even if it's just a discussion to, to decide that we do like it this way. But I think when we run into these situations where we have a lot of people who want to speak, that maybe we look at the timing of it or how much time that we give them.
So do we have a second?
Well, I would say I'm interested in understanding and knowing a little bit more because I do think, you know, as times change, as the needs of the community changes, it's important for us to constantly revisit protocols. How protocols were visited regarding this in the past was, we received information from, I believe, the superintendent of options available to us. So I'd be open to hearing a little bit more, Michelle, and maybe even, I know two of us can meet with the superintendent, maybe I'd offer it myself, unless there's another board member that wants to, maybe two of us can sit down with superintendent stock this next month and get a little more clarification on options that are available and open up that conversation, similar to an ad hoc committee, I'd be open to that.
You know, I will proceed as the board directs, whether it's through a subcommittee or an agenda item, you know, whichever way the board would like to proceed, I can provide the information and options to the board.
So do we have an alternate motion?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, under, under our board bylaws, that a trustee can ask for something placed on the agenda with a second, or if the board wishes to dis-designate a, another trustee to, you know, two trustees to meet with me on the matter, that can be done as well, and then the board can decide-
So we don't need a motion?
You don't.
So I think Tiffany and Michelle should be on the subcommittee.
Great, then I will work with both trustee Sutherland and Satoff to schedule-
Does that meet your needs, Michelle?
That's great, thank you.
In the next month.
All right, is there anything else?
So, I do have something, and I know this is hard, right? Because I know we can't engage back and forth, but I do want some clarification from me. I don't know if any other board members feel they need clarification. I know that we are limited on what we can and can't do during public comment, and I fully respect, I want to hear from anyone and everyone's concerns. I am getting concerned, though, that we have now seen over the course of multiple meetings, several comments regarding minors, identifying minors, whether it's by name or not, it's identifying factors about them, opinions of minors or situations involving minors, that in many cases is not the purview of this board. So I'm wondering if there's a way I can request legal counsel as to what is appropriate, what is allowable in that case, because we say often that we protect every student, and I do want to be careful that this does not become a courtroom and that we are not a jury. And so I've been incredibly uncomfortable regarding all minors that have been talked about, especially when they're not here. I don't think it's appropriate, and I'd like legal counsel on that regarding public comment. And in specific with that, we have said as a board in the past that comments must be directed to the board and enter the purview of the board. So I'd like a little more clarity on that when comments are brought in about outside individuals or entities that in- individuals or entities that in no way have anything to do with, um, the, the direction or the decisions being made by this board.
Trustee Satoff, would it, uh, would you, uh, think that if we include a legal counsel in the conversation, uh, you and trustee Southern had about public comment options, that we could also, uh, have legal counsel potentially join and provide some clarification there, and then we could sh, share back with the board? Because in developing the previous options, that's who I consulted, was our legal counsel.
Sure, so, because only two of us can meet, so we, the two of us would meet like an ad hoc committee with you regarding public comment in general, with the attorney to hear what, what direction we can give as board members during public comment?
Correct. And in that way, there can be a dialogue, and then, um, then we can work to, um, uh, go from there and decide how we might share information with the board, whether it's through a memorandum or through an, another means.
Okay. Is that able to be done before the next meeting? When's our next meeting?
Next meeting is June 7th, so I'll make myself available, uh, is, is any way possible to accommodate your, your schedules.
Okay, that works for me.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right. Meeting is adjourned to closed session.